Good evening. Welcome to this evening's meeting of a joint session of Scottsville's Planning Commission and Town Council. Working together on a couple of agenda items. This meeting is held pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the state of Virginia Open Meeting Laws. My name is Matt Wallace. I serve as Scottsville Town Administrator. And this meeting is open to the public at 401 Valley Street, the town hall, and is conducted in hybrid format with members, our officials, and members of the public joining us online through Zoom as well as here in person. The public has several opportunities to participate in this meeting, both in person and online. Public feedback is welcome. We've also got a telephone option to call in. This meeting does not have any public hearings advertised, but there is a matter from the public section on the agenda. If you're viewing this meeting in the future on the town's YouTube channel, thank you so much. We'll come to order here momentarily.
Here, but technically, this is the Planning Commission's meeting. And the council members and myself are invited guests. So that we can learn and observe and add anything if asked to do so. So I'm going to immediately turn the meeting over to Chairman Lisa of Planning Commission and let her call the order and run the show.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for joining us and thank you as well for joining us. Do, can we do a roll? And do we have a commissioner on Zoom?
Yes. So the whole four. Molly Ann, Lee, Fred, Matthew Johnson, Dan Grisco. He is not online. He said he would join us online. Scraps, Chris, President, Chair. Two out of five is not a planning commission forum. If Mr. Grisco joins online, I'll let you know, and that will begin the planning commission forum. We can go through the agenda together with the forum of Town Council here. But at the, at the moment, Planning Commission doesn't have a forum to take any voting business.
Okay. Question about the minutes. Since on the agenda says past meeting minutes, April 4th and May 2nd.
Yeah, so could you amend? Because I switched April 4th with our special session from the 23rd.
Okay.
So the course is May 2nd and then May 23rd.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And so this is our agenda. Okay. It's fine for me. I guess my concern is it's gonna be a long night for the town council, so I'd like to. Is there anything, is everything on here relevant to them as well?
I'd say, but please amend your agenda if you see that it kind of this time doesn't seem german or the time of the hour.
I would say. I, I feel that the, we were called as part of a special meeting mostly to discuss Airbnb's. Because it sounded like the Planning Commission wanted to get council feedback on Airbnb permits so that we are more in lockstep in evaluating them and how we think about them. So that to me feels like the most germane portion of this meeting for Town Council. The other items here, we will all encounter a work session next week anyway. So I, so that to me, if we were going to prioritize something, that, that would be it.
Okay. Yeah, I think that the PUD, I don't know if it's really something that we need to hear about right now. Okay. And 345 East Main Street, this will be, this is really for County Council, right?
Yes.
Okay, so is it possible since they're here, can, and they've already been through so much, can we bump them up? And will they be able to vote at that point in time? Or does, do the meetings have to happen in succession?
For 345 East Main, I put that on here together since, since Council is here and Planning Commission acted on it on the 23rd. This is something that, that Council could take up and get advertised. And that will allow resolution on it later this month, if, if that's a pleasure to work together and talk about this case.
So since it's on here, is this for us or is this for them?
This would be, this would be a Council item. The Planning Commission has supported it.
Okay, so then maybe we need to remove that from this agenda.
Well, I mean, Council's, Council's here and connected, so.
Okay.
It's, I put it here because it's something that you can share together and, and talk about together. Planning Commission did its piece on 345 East Main two weeks ago. Council can take it up from here now and keep things moving on it if you, if you care.
Okay, so then. All right, so then I guess the way is, because maybe we want to find the first. Okay. It's good to me. We don't have a forum to vote on it, so we can just set it as is.
I'm trying to get into the big story and Mr. Johnson via meeting.
Okay. All right, so let's table the two minutes. One notation, one of them says March 23rd should be May 23rd. And did we, no, we got these because I don't remember seeing them. All right, so let's table these for now, please. Okay, number three, would you like to, once we have everyone from Town Council here, would you like, who would like to provide number three for us, report on relevant actions by the Town Council?
I think probably Matt would be our best with Dan not being, having joined us yet. Mr. Grisco, good evening.
This is what Town Council worked on back on May 16th. They did their budget adoption was the most important one on that. That included an increase to the transient occupancy tax with, with those uses being much on planning commissions agenda as well. But the meal tax that was advertised was not passed and Council balanced a little bit smaller budget based on that. Business license fees, the base fee also went up from $30 to $50. Of interest for Planning Commission were approval of a couple of consultant grants that will inform Planning Commission's decision. Some of that work is underway in the current fiscal year and more of it will continue in the near. But that includes some extra financing support for the commission, which informs some of the staff work that you see before you now, of many of the contracts and more help on things like site planning, new and zoning updates. So I appreciate that right now, and that, that should help with the planning commissions work also. They called a special this evening and heard an appeal for the sign at the Tiger Fields Market. Tiger Fields had presented, presented a sign that was too large in what our work is called for. A R B approved everything else in their certificate of appropriateness about the landscaping and the building, but did not approve the large sign. Town Council supported A R B's decision on that, and so they're, they're going to come back with a smaller sign for, for collection signs that individuals needs to. Sounds good.
Sounds good. Yes, we heard some of that at the last meeting, so. All right, thank you. Matters from the public or Planning Commission?
Scottsville, and I want to first of all commend the Planning Commission for their, their discussions and their insight they have. The PUD and, and Airbnb's, these are things I've been following for a while. We actually started when I was on Planning Commission and, you know, I think these are very important issues of Airbnb and the PUD. To get those right and have experts in, I think you're going to have experts in, at least on the PUD. I think that's a great, you're going to do that, but I, I like some of the, some issues about having a broader discussion about Airbnb's and really getting the PUD right and what, what it's all about. The, I think I did hear there was, you know, there's, there was concern about that there's so many Airbnb's and how's that relate to long-term, you know, rentals? In fact, I heard recently there's more Airbnb's in New York City than there are long-term rents. I don't know if that's going to happen here, but I know there's people who want rentals and you know, Airbnb's taking, so I think that's really good. I'm glad there's, there's a discussion about that. I was very confused with this meeting because I didn't even know it was a, a joint meeting. I do think the Planning Commission should require that the, the agenda be online days in advance, not just, it wasn't on Friday or Saturday or today. So I didn't know about the meeting. It wasn't posted. Usually it's posted, so I think in communication and information to the public is really vital. And along with that, I'd like to see if the minutes, I think the minutes are getting a little better, but like these minutes here, usually they, they used to have them available here where you could pick them up or you can see them the next day. So I think once they're approved, I'd like to see if the, 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 and the Town Council could, could require that the minutes be put online the next day once they're approved, because some of these minutes are way dated and, and, and it's, like I said, it's getting better, but I, to follow what's going on and it's important issues like this, you really need minutes. And, you know, you could go to the YouTube sometimes, but it, you know, that's two hours of trying to figure out what's going on. So I think the agenda and the minutes being required early and, and consistently, I think that would, that would be really good to have. But again, I do like the fact that the Planning Commission has some really good discussions and far more active engagement than when I was here about some of these issues. So I want to commend you on that.
Okay, old business, five-day Scottsville plans unit development. Guest presentation by Piedmont Environmental Council.
Good evening, Council, Council, and also members of the public potentially joining on soon. I'm Peter Krebs from the Piedmont Environmental Council. Matt invited me in to just share some top line impressions about the proposed P U D ordinance. So I live in Charlottesville, but my mother-in-law is at Lenox and runs the museum. And then Eclipse Stein is kind of my aunt, so I've been coming here for about 30 plus years. And I'm decently familiar with the highest and, and its history and its trajectory. So it's pretty exciting to, you know, to be in a small way part of that project. The, the Piedmont Environmental Council advocates for a thoughtful approach to development in which rural areas are protected. And that's the main thing that people talk about, about us. But the other half of that formulation is having great places for people to live that have nature right out the door and are thoughtful, well-connected, so we don't need sprawl, so. The Piedmont Environmental Council is actually pretty closely involved with the Wolf Factory project. I would imagine that's an analog that you guys are looking at for this. I think it's certainly one of the most relevant local examples of something like what, what's happening here. So I, I didn't know how long I had, so I kind of targeted the usual three-minute limit. I might go a bit over, but generally speaking, I thought I'd talk about, in general, the instrument of P U D, what the benefits are, some thoughts about relationships to that in the site and also the Wolf Factory. And then also, I did read the actual ordinance and just had a few thoughts. Others have offered line edits. I didn't go that far, but these are just general concepts. And so a P U D is a pretty beneficial instrument, especially when the zoning isn't set up for to do the jobs that you needed to do. So our zoning code broadly is like the mid-century modernist implement and really segregates uses and too often people. And what a P U D does is it allows you to, on, on a site level, be thoughtful about mixing uses, thinking about a little bit more specifically about what types of uses you would want to have in there. So, for example, the zoning code might allow a whole broad range of things in a commercial district. The P U D could be a little bit more targeted. Additionally, a P U D can improve site circulation and livability. And one of my favorite things about it actually is that lets you be mindful about clustering uses, maybe being in intensive one area and keeping a very, very light touch in a different area. So if you authorize a certain amount of density for the site, you don't have to spread it evenly across the site. If you have an environmentally sensitive area over here, you can leave that completely alone and, and be more intense on, on a place where the ground's solid or flat or whatever. It's, it's a good combination for adaptive reuse, which is why I thought of the Wolf Factory. Some of the things about the Wolf Factory that I think are analogous is, it is this adaptive reuse. Heritage storytelling, all that stuff. Stunning natural site next to important water resources, really. They're right close to, right next to rivers. And then also the, the Wolf Factory, one of the things that was most interesting is that it was an economic development opportunity. But unlike the normal practice, Albemarle County chose to work with the developer to improve quality of life as an incentive to bring employees here. Because to be a single lily tree, he, his people are what he sells, right? So, so bringing in the best employees immediately improves his economic prospects. And so having a, a approach to economic development that focuses on building people up and, and having them be healthy and productive is great. And it has the side benefit of all the Albemarle County residents also benefit from those improvements. So instead of offering a tax break, they, Albemarle County offered to pay for a pedestrian bridge. They completed the single missing link in the ride down the trail, which we've tried to do for 30 years. And it wasn't the Parks Department that made it work. It was the Economic Development Authority. So that was super cool. So we could talk more about the Wolf Factory if you want, but in the interest of time, moving on to this P U D ordinance. Some of the things that, that I observe about it is that it, it's important to be able to cluster development writ large. The ordinance, I think, the only thing it talks about specifically clustering is housing. And maybe clustering the whole deal is implicit in there, or I, I would like to see it be explicit. So then you might also be aggregating your open space, which I was just saying is, is potentially one of the benefits. So imagine you've got like, I haven't crawled through there in a while, but imagining there's a forest stand that you really have to protect. Then, you know, include that in your acreage as part of the total, can speak calculation. And indeed, talking about open space, it's not just for recreation, it is also for ecological services. And the ordinance doesn't say that. The ordinance talks about open space being for recreation. I might spell out ecological function as well. And of course, in, in a town context, it's best if ecological function is related to recreation. So instead of having a pit full of river for your stormwater, why not have a pond or something like that? So it's both recreational and ecological. And again, it's like improving your community by doing that. One lesson we've had with Albemarle County rezonings sort of across the board, and I know the experience is probably different in Scottsville because everything's, you know, better here, but when, when there's an eastment or a right-of-way that is important to pass through or part of the site. So, for example, the Cameron Springway Plan talks about having some kind of access along the, the James River all the way. If, if you want to have that be part of the site, it needs to show up in the site plan. And the right-of-way needs to be conveyed with the rezoning and asset condition. Because we know that HOA Board at best will be the successor steward. And they have no relationship to any verbal agreements. So, so you only get those things then, and best of all, when, is if the developer actually does the connection that you want to have. So imagining that you guys are changing your zoning ordinance, so this P U D ordinance needs to look beyond this specific project, I think. So I'm just saying that as a general rule, get your rights-of-way as a condition of rezoning. And the ordinance talks about, actually, I don't know if the ordinance does talk about it. But cooperative parking or sharing parking is a pretty great thing. I know that feasibility study for the plant project does talk about cooperative housing. And so that's especially great when you have multiple uses in the space that might all need parking, but not all at the same time. And in fact, a lot of mixed-use projects across America are generally layover parks. And it really harms that vitality if people look and see a lot of empty parking spaces. It doesn't really scream vitality when you see that. Again, I don't think it's relevant for this case, but broadly, the, the P U D should talk about including transit facilities. If there's an existing transit right-of-way or line here, so if this were right on Valley Street or something, you might want to be thinking about what you're doing on transit. P U C always advocates for onsite solar generation. So I, I don't know how that fits, but especially in industrial sites, large roofs and big parking lots, and the site has all three of those. You might even beyond the, the P U D ordinance, you might want to work with, with the developer on that. And then I think, just to close, one lesson that didn't go, I think, perfectly with the Wolf Factory project is in its middle stages, the plan was for it to be a truly mixed site that would have housing. And in the end, the developer decided not to do housing, only commercial. And, and then the economy changed dramatically in the last two years. There, I don't know how much square footage they have hundreds of feet of office space that are not being used. Maybe if we were doing it right now, that housing would be a part of it, so.
You ended up with a parking lot that's bigger than the building and the building and a parking lot that aren't full.
Right, and to not full, like flat, empty, like, that's probably not a Sunday. That could be a Tuesday with that photo.
So what do you mean the developer decided not to? I mean, was it part of, it wasn't part of the conditions that they was going to be residential and commercial?
So I, I want to be careful. I'm only going to state my impression. This is not a fact, okay? It would be important to fact-check what I'm saying. But my impression is that as they were developing the concept of the Wolf Factory, broadly speaking, it was going to have housing mainly and there's sawtooth building on the left side there. But then Willatory is growing at such a phenomenal rate, is, is commercial tenant felt like they could either use all the space or at worst sublet all that space. So you have a marquee tenant lined up, you make your project work for them. And, and I mean, it's, it's still, it's a positive thing. I mean, I love the Wolf Factory. My rate is as an A, but maybe it would be an A+ if it comes out.
So to clarify Lisa's question, so if you're, if you're making a PUD, you should design it and put conditions on it that are perhaps separate from your. So I mean, that's my question, so.
I guess, I guess.
Did it require housing or not?
So the PUD didn't require housing, it seems, but I, it sounds like the development plan didn't require it either.
Yeah, so, so I mean, I, I think the Albemarle, again, speaking for a lot of other people's opinions. I think Albemarle County's vision. I think Albemarle County's vision, and of course, what it, who gets to say what Albemarle County thinks or feels or wants? But I think the county's vision was for it to be a truly mixed site. And the developer sort of convinced them, like, this could be a terrific spot there's. It was a short time ago, but already, it it was ages ago in in the world of thinking about there being a housing crisis or affordable housing being front and center, like back in twenty seventeen. Believe it, like, people weren't really talking about it that much. I, this goes back much earlier than twenty seventeen, so. You know, you think about it, and and so then, that's why I'm kind of saying, like, think about that site and and how you would like for it to be the fabric, part of the fabric of um Scottsville. And of course, the developer is going to have a a P and L, they're going to have to succeed or the whole thing won't work, but um as much as possible, I I think you should follow your your own vision, so.
And how how did you, what what sort of environmental or ecological considerations did you have, especially because the river and the creek are there?
Great, that's a great question. And from a um like that aspect of it, like the environmental litigation aspect of it, we weren't involved at all. We were, our involvement was um advocating for the um economic development package to be focused in in a livability-focused way, so.
You helped with the bridge here, didn't you?
Correct, that was that was the main, I think, tangible.
To get a trail from this site over to the trail that are on the other side of the river.
Yeah, because the Rybena Trail, which loops Charlottesville in its entirety, um had a a break in that where that creek is, and the the creek is completely unaffordable, partly because it's large, but partly because the sewage plant is right there. Nobody wants to wade through it. Yeah, see, we'd want to wade through that creek, right?
What are some of the eco, I I haven't heard of some space called Ecological Homes before. What do you think are some of the most active, like, designed things that are like better than just an open field? That we can try to build as ecological homes? When you say that, what are you trying to pair it as?
Well, well, so I think the developer is going to be thinking about um uh impermeable surfaces and and stormwater, that'll be, that'll be a big, I think, front and center thing. And like, how are there ways that um uh stormwater can be used in a in a a positive way? Like, I I think that that would be one. I think another one would be maintaining stands of trees as much as possible. Not completely clear about the site plan, but when I glanced at it, it didn't have like major critical slope implications, but certainly in Scottsville, the critical slopes can be a major issue if you have P U Ds other places. So, for example, I I saw one project in Maryland where they they got all the density clustered into like a quarter of the site. It was, I'm thinking it was like a by like um the Severn River where there are some steep slopes. And so they put the, I think it might have only been housing in fact, but they had housing on just a tiny piece of land and had these forested slopes. And they they were included primarily because of their ecological service of maintaining that bank filtering stormwater, all that stuff. I don't even know if there were trails, maybe, I would assume there were, because it's like a no-brainer to have that. Yeah, so I I I I think the the steep slopes and stormwater, uh i- if you if you were to have, like, onsite you know, solar, that that could be a piece of the clustering. There there's a I can't remember what the name of the apartment complex is, but there is a apartment complex on uh in Pentops. It's the one that's in between, like, um Route twenty north and Garden Top Park. You can see it if you're driving north out of town.
Is it millions of Pentops or Castadia?
No, it it's like Riverside Village, I think it's called. They have solar overparking there. Yeah, so yeah, there it is to your left where it says River House Commons, so some of their parking, yeah, right there, there's solar overparking.
Parking space is cheap.
Right, exactly, so. So that's like, you know, free free electrons for the I I don't know who who gets those electrons, whether it's HOA or or whoever. But I mean, kind of looking at that site, I they didn't do, they might have used the P U D, but they proffered the left-hand section, the, all they green on the to, if you could pull them out south just a little bit, yeah, that green area where your cursor is, was proffered to the county's park, so. But it's also a wetland, so again, it it's more eco-function than park.
And they got the density on this part of it and preserve all of this instead of leveling off.
Correct.
And that's the basic trade-off, right?
Right, or instead of, yes, e- exactly. They didn't have to physically level it off and they didn't have to spread out the density either, so. And and I could have mentioned that that wetland might serve some stormwater, you know, function that the um with that street network. Yeah, so that's a project that I really like, that's mixed-use, right? The the Route twenty fronting stuff is I I think it might just be retail, I don't know if they have actual, like, industry-type commercial. I wouldn't mind uh seeing actual jobs be there, you know, um but
That that reminds me, you'd mentioned in your um speaking about the Wolf Factory, how it was hoping to be a draw for staff and employees. So that was if there was housing.
Right, well, so so the idea being that um the the enterprise, Willa Tree Apps, wanted to be able to have their employees work in a very natureful environment where they look out the window and be able to um step outside. And they they have lots of, like, outside desks and stuff like that to go sit by the river and think, you know, um. Uh yeah, it's a too bad, too bad, that's kind of old, but i- they even envision having, like, um a boat launch there. And of course, now the um there's going to be a pedestrian bridge over the Rybena River there. So again, like, really coalescing um uh a lot of activity. And if you go there on a weekend, it it's pretty full of residents from all over the county and farther away just enjoying the place, having coffee, walking by the river.
The restaurant, the brewery, coffee shop.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, so so those elements give it like a nine AM to midnight, like. If if the housing were there, then it would be a full twenty-four hour, you know? Full twenty-hour, like, yeah, so there you can see, they have the huge windows. So they're they're definitely taking advantage, uh every window has a great view.
And this is historic tax credit funded, in part, it's a good example of having architectural features get cleaned up and improved. And they have to be as part of the financing of the project.
Yeah.
Changing and demolishing this would make the project a lot more expensive, so they they keep it even though they're not using it.
Correct, yeah. And and of course, that's like a neighborhood touchstone, it would have been horrible to lose that, that water tower. So, so again, like, the um the way the project is redeveloped benefits the residents of Albemarle County. Much better if they do it that way than than, you know, have the developer um reap some pretty frankly, medium-term profits and and move on to to uh another set of enticements.
Thank you.
So, thank you, i- if it's okay, I'd like to hang out and watch the rest of the agenda and be happy to talk more after.
So any text amendment?
Over over on the end, the other, sorry, we're changing gears, uh maybe?
Yeah, did we have something specific about the outreach process to to just, I can't speak today, I'm sorry, just to quickly share this?
Not not much in the community, I focused on this um uh technical expertise part of it first, um to make sure that, like, my big bases have been covered. So um Maxie Brown from Culpeper, um working for us, the Brooklyn group, she went through this as well and suggested a couple of other mineards that I shared with you. Um but we've, I think with with Mr. Kepstein back as well, we've kind of gotten about broad strokes of this um set on what the application needs to carry and what kind of legal checks we need, so things like you heard on that. That mixed usage shouldn't be up in the air to change with the nature of the economy. If you strictly feel like it needs to have some homes and some offices together to work, that should be specified in our ordinance, so that's that's good for us. If this feels like it's getting pretty close, um I think I'm, I feel, you know, more ready to represent to the public this is a pretty big draft and how we can talk about, um, you know, how does the seal, what do you want to see as the goals of it? Especially in some of that um ranking of the objectives. I did something like the cooperative parking. Cooperative parking is a good idea for less paid area, reducing the project cost, having smaller parking lots. But it runs the risk that if you you don't balance that just right, there might not be enough parking on site, it might spill out somewhere else. Um so I I could see that being a concern to a neighbor, and I might say I I'm willing to pass on some cooperative parking in order to make sure that it's always contained on site. But that's a, that's a trade-off to talk about. If this feels like it's on the right track technically, I think I can, I can feel good about shifting gears to the neighbor conversation line.
I'd like to add some of the the items that were, that were just mentioned in the press to this before we do that.
Sure, sure. And the, I think what you what you said about the specific commitments on actually building things is very well said. And we we got at this as our discussion on that, the house building back in the spring, that agreeing in principle to the trail isn't good enough.
Right.
And having a buck to a future homeowners association is a good idea. Um we see it on-site and in physical development, so I'm glad we got that with our house building project, I'm glad it's up for discussion and entire council.
Yeah, good, yeah. And of course, the P U, P U D ordinance can be agnostic about whether whether it's mixed-use at all. But but when you execute the P U D, that's when your values and and the site and its opportunities come together. So the P U D doesn't need to say that it must be mixed-use, it it should say that it can be mixed-use.
You said line edits from Maxie Brown, is that, do we have it here?
The the most recent one that I that I sent out includes those, it was only a couple. She gave me more detail on the plan and the surveys that we get, that you you want to see, like Mr. Kepstein was talking about with easements, that those easements are there or proposed, that that the site had a little bit of survey-level detail of what piece of land are we actually talking about, what easements exist on it and what easements are proposed? So that you see, if we're talking about a trail, where precisely is it going to go and who's going to have the legal control of that? So getting, it's, um, Ms. Brown was suggesting a little bit more detail upfront from the applicant about survey-level data of what do you know about your property and what do you propose to change? She also recommended a small change in the objective on economic development. Mr. Pan, I think he spoke to this on occasion of looking for job creation on these sites. And so um she picked up on that as well, and the language is in C, um creating jobs and bolstering the local economy, that we haven't been as clear about that before. That if a if a project is asking for special submission on something like this and plans to transform a site, it would be nice to be clear about what kind of businesses are we talking about and what's their expected economic impact? How many people are going to work here that's successful? But the middle of the ordinance, no change, and the general intent that she she spoke about a lot, that's something she didn't throw in.
That all sounds good, thank you. Yeah, so I think I'm ready to switch gears now. So the ordinance that we're looking at is related to downtown commercial district. So that's in the historic district, um and the underlines are the draft changes?
Um, that's right. Council, this this draft represents um some quick turnaround and a rough first draft on what the planning commission had asked for related to the um Airbnb topics, that um maybe there was enough of a historic mixed uses, especially here on that main street, that didn't need special requirement scrutiny on every change of use within them. The commercial zoning that we have uses um one, one commercial zone for two different areas. And the town has recognized this as a problem before, but not not tried to make language to change it. We've got the same zoning rules for um the title credits market as for the Airbnb change downtown on Valley Street. And it creates a little bit of a blind instrument and some some zoning challenges in both instances. So planning commission asked about maybe revising and tightening up in some ways, opening up in others this downtown commercial to make it different from the uptown commercial, which is going to be more car-related. So in those, I um, in the downtown, I I struck some uses like um uh car wash that doesn't take in a in a downtown lot. Um and made others um by right. So the tourist lodgings being one, um the upstairs apartment residential use. And the um the back, the backdoor storage shed, things like that. So it it sets a little bit clearer, um a little more flexible framework on the whole mixed-use buildings consistent with the issue. Last week, we talked about how in fifty years, we're we're not really going to care so much how often we still get switched between an office or an apartment or a tourist lodgings, as long as the envelope of the building stays looking good, that's all we would want. So I tried what this shows is a few more by-right uses and a few of the others, um, checking that they're going to be allowed in this sort of issue. That might get at some of what the commission and council were looking for as far as like policy guidance on these areas.
I think so, and I, and this applies to the commercial, this that's own commercial, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not to the, like, the buildings that are commercials, this is strictly lower level, okay?
Yeah, and it would save money and kind of put it down if we did not continually process.
Yeah.
And that, and that also make, you know, I'm looking over this document too about sort of our outline for tourist lodging logic in terms of what is the best option, right? And the best option seems to be filling in renovated vacant buildings or commercial buildings or repurposing them to serve that need, which is also in alignment with how council has made decisions about Airbnb or transient lodging up to this point. And so it makes sense for me within the commercial zoning to have this, you know, update. Because it gives more flexibility to those properties, which fit with our with sort of our own sort of best practices for where those things should go.
And we were also hoping that it would encourage the owners of these buildings
To make use of them.
Do something with them.
Yeah. And that's an important point as well, you know, we'll come to this, I guess, when we talk more about it, but from the Airbnb inventory, we've got at least five to ten properties in town that although not rated poor, are rated fair, which means like they're starting to show some significant signs of deterioration or deferred maintenance. And the amount of capital it'll take to rehabilitate those structures will start to bump up against the price point of sale. And that's not going to be attractive as a residence or as a commercial entity. So we're going to have to think about how those properties will have to demonetize just to preserve them, if we're interested in preserving some of our more historic buildings.
Yeah, it doesn't totally solve that problem, but I think one of the ways that we increase the value of these structures is by making more business, creating more business options without having a question mark of can I do it with this?
I'm sorry, and with our within the commercial district or zoning, that makes a lot of sense.
And and again, we're only we're only talking about the red area on Valley Main Street. There's no change expected to state of the earth with a couple of lots back. Those are primarily residential and high traffic business locations.
So this change would have made the East Main Street property whose address I'm blanking on, this wouldn't have made that by right, that Airbnb?
Yes, that commercial lot.
It's the where the hair salon is and there's the two or three units upstairs. So if the owner wanted to convert those units to Airbnb, he would have been able to do that by right and not special use permit.
That's right.
So I miss, I I'm going to re-ask a question that I think maybe I stated wrong before. If there is a building that has commercial and residential property, that residential is now would not need to be rezoned for Airbnb or anything like that?
That's that's right. This this draft lets you freely switch between apartments, nightly rooms and offices. But it it looks the same from the outside, it's only other a couple of cars there. The theory is it doesn't matter and let the let the property owner change between those uses freely.
No.
I I I was trying to formulate my words. My concern is the same concern I brought, I sound like a broken record. We just signed off on, you know, thirty to four hundred thousand dollar homes and everything else. And affordable rentals are extremely hard to come by in Scottsville. And if all of a sudden, when it's already extremely hard to come by, I think you can be reconfiguring the the entire community by saying, you know, all these people who can afford half million dollar homes are going to be living here and the people who are spending, you know, between seven hundred and thousand dollars on rent for, you know, a two bedroom apartment now have nowhere to live.
Cool.
I
That's that's exactly the argument, yes.
Yeah. I I think we need case by case control.
I think I I hear you on the case by case control, that's kind of how I voted in these last like two. Because I hear you on the mixed, you know, mixed house, effectively, now at different price points. Uh, the other thing that we would need to consider too, I think if we voted in favor of this is to draw, I mean, looking at our residences that are currently some rentals, things that are zone residential that are currently residences, but are also up for a Airbnb discussion. And I think we then have to draw a much harder line about that. You know, for me, it really comes back to this, it's really two things, are we losing existing residents, long term residents? And the condition of the property in relation to, you know, what what it's going to take to rehabilitate an existing structure? And make it profitable or valuable to the property owner? And that may take a case by case evaluation.
Why we were trying to strike a balance between just looking at the properties on Valley Main Street and taking it, instead of saying everybody is in this, you know, the new zoning.
Yeah.
So we would leave the residential areas that have traditionally been only residential areas alone and use these commercial spaces or these spaces that have been fluctuating back and forth between commercial and residential throughout their histories.
Yeah.
We can be more flexible with those.
I feel like that's the only place where there's actually apartments though. I I mean, when you when you get into the outskirts of, you know, where the houses are and things like that, you know, that's different, I feel like.
And maybe another another option is to look at these buildings, you know, one by like individually and say if these are long term apartment buildings now, we're not going to change the zoning for this building, but we could change it for some of these emptier, you know, empty structures or the the buildings that have traditionally been, you know, a mixed a mixed abuse of residential and.
I just, I don't know where there's any place where apartments aren't being used though. I mean, there might be empty storefronts downstairs.
Right.
But every single apartment is is, there there is no such thing as empty apartments in Scottsville. Every single apartment is.
And and I hear and I hear you on that. And I also like just sort of like process, I like having sort of like a policy here, so we address this thing. The housing thing, I think is just kind of a unique micro issue for us. And if we got to the point that you're saying, sort of like going around to an individual property and saying, well, what about this one? But this one, we might as well just do the permitting process. Because that's kind of like how it would come up anywhere. A property would be bought and say, hello, we'd like to use it for this purpose now, what do you think?
Right, and I don't think the intention is for the downstairs empty commercial spaces to then turn into residences. Because we would want those to stay as commercial.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but I wanted to start thinking about some creative ways for us to incentivize getting these places filled.
Yeah.
So if this isn't the answer, maybe we need to talk about something else.
Yeah.
But, you know.
I hear that.
They've been case by case, and I mean, this is an example of one where we we did a special use permit. They they applied almost three years ago to do two small commercial spaces here and apartments upstairs. And council approved it with all encouragement to say, go ahead, and hasn't gotten done. It's not the not the town's fault, we did everything created once and only, but it doesn't always move this.
Right.
They have other problems.
Right, and that's another example where it kind of fits, again, kind of even though in case by case, like this fits the situation where it's a commercial building, it's going to take something else to monetize it. So it makes sense for there to be a transient lodging there, we voted for it.
Right.
And so we were creative with the property number, like Matt said, right, it's selfridged for other reasons, you know.
You know, one one comment that you've made about repair, well, beyond repair, you know, you're you're pointing out there are some homes in town that are so severely falling apart that they you want to try to make it worthwhile for owners to renovate them, but I think what happens is some owners are just letting their houses go downhill and they just don't really care. But if you incentivize an investor being able to come in and buy those and turn them into Airbnb because they think they're going to make a lot of money, you're you're actually rewarding the landlord who's not doing the right thing at their property.
I I thought of that earlier today myself. Being a school teacher, I often think about rewarding that. But for some of these properties, like there is no other option. You know, like they've they've gotten to a point where like, well, here we are. And some of those properties are residential properties.
Right.
So the commercial thing wouldn't be an incentive for them anyway, we'd still have to look at them on a case by case basis. And then if I'm converting, if we're voting for some of these residential properties, it needs substantial work to be transient lodging, well, I certainly wouldn't want to give up the commercial spaces on Valley Street that are currently rentals as well. And I so that's kind of like, so that's again, why I keep coming back to like, are we losing existing residents? And what's the condition of the property? Because that seems to be like the two few things.
If if those are the if those are the decision standards that you're using, then like we can put that in policy and that can help answer planning commission's question of what's our guidance on making recommendations? We kind of put those bullet points, here are the goals that we're trying to achieve when we approve one of these. That that works as a decision tool. The the first question we were at was like, I don't want to be recommending things and commission doesn't want to be recommending things. And then council denies the recommendations because you're judging them in different ways.
That's right.
But if those bullet points help us get on the same page, that works. If that's what you agree on.
Also, I think, you know, just personally, I don't care for rewarding the, you know, people that are letting their houses fall into ruins because they can sell them and make a lot of money, like I just want them built and I want them. But what happens is if they get filled at top dollar and then, you know, as Ms. Science pointed out, the average person who lives and works in this community can't afford to live there any longer. I mean, you know, granted that the property that Ms. Greer bought, it was in a state of disrepair. And tenants that were living there should, you know, that was unfair and unsafe, they shouldn't have been living in those conditions. But now they're sold to an investor and now they're not living there and that's extra apartments out of the housing market. And it just becomes that much less affordable.
I actually voted, believe it or not, voted for the the one that Ms. Greer did. Voted against the one on Main. Because those apartments were so bad, it was just one apartment, you know, above the old real estate place, you know, where she's working now. It was so bad to she she's kind of not really gutting it, but essentially gutting it and turning it to something else, it was uninhabitable, you know. That I was okay with, I I've heard talk about doing the same thing at Three Thirty Valley where there's four inhabitable apartments, you know, where I just.
Or, I mean, there's there's one property in town that's uninhabited. That needs a lot of work.
Um, no, but yes, I guess we could also talk about that one yet.
So there are a couple, I guess.
Oh, okay.
But there's some, so there there there's there's one property I'm thinking that is uninhabited, right? So no one's living there.
Oh.
So it's just gonna continue to go and so I so we're not losing anything if that becomes transient lodging. And if it does become transient lodging, we get a gain because we fix an old house. We get, again, to sort of see, serve a need because we do need some transient lodging here, you know?
And that's the taxes, so that we get the tax money.
Right, that's right, and that's going to save it.
And also.
But so anyway, so that's what I'm saying, it's just kind of like, those are the two things that I keep coming back to. That doesn't feel like we can just rezone the commercial zone in that way and address the issue sort of around quality of housing and mixed housing types.
And also, I'll put Austin on the spot for a second, yeah, just because I see you sitting there and I know yours is coming. Something where somebody's going to be coming and going, they own the property, they own the home, they have no intention of selling the home, not living there or whatever, but there's going to be long stretches of time where it's empty. Like something like that.
Right.
It is great because can't have a long term renter in there because you will be, you know, kind of back up. So something like that, I think is a good option for an Airbnb too. I just, yeah, there's just so many that we're losing. If if we, I don't want to see any situation where for example, the old Dollar General, which was brick township and, you know, different things. You know, there's three great apartments upstairs. I don't want to see that building turned into, you know, they could do whatever they want. And now you have three people who no longer have their home.
But, you know, I would say that this is not straight money making opportunity for landlords and maybe there's work involved and and there's taxes and there's fees and, you know, there's state taxes and there's only so much of that you could pass on to the to the tourists.
Yeah.
Um, so it's an economic decision, you know, not everyone in town is going to say, well, okay, I want to be my Airbnb. At a certain point, you saturate the market and you're not, you're they're not going to make any money and then. But that, you know, that's an economic decision that the investor will make when they look at their occupancy rate. So I don't think that we have to worry about having too many. Because I think people will realize, I'm just not making enough money on this, there's too much competition, I've had to lower my rate.
I was surprised to learn this from applicants, that I I would have thought that the steady monthly revenue would be better and less work than running an Airbnb, but what we heard is that those weekend rates are enough money that it's worth it.
Although I, in summer, there's personally, we have rentals, long term rentals, and I have no interest in making an Airbnb lucrative, a lot of work. It's a lot of work. And I don't want people in my house trashing it. So I don't know.
I don't know, I think that being said, either we're going to get so many requests for Airbnbs that we want to put something in place that says you can just do whatever you want with it. In which case that that means we're getting a lot of requests for Airbnbs. Or it's just a couple and we can make them go through the process every time it comes up.
I just don't want to keep sending you guys stuff that gets shot down. So I just want to come up with, whether, you know, we all agree with it or not, like this is the set of rules that we're going to use to evaluate whether we even put forward a proposal.
I'm not sure, can you all hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say in agreement with what fellow planning commissioner just said, that I think it is important that we develop consistent criteria. I've said this before, I think in both different sessions, that I favor a pretty open process. I don't know that the town is overly knowledgeable about the future, no matter how much we plan or matter how much we know. I don't know that it's necessarily our business to tell another business that it can't open. So I'm simply saying I would want a very open, extremely, not a very limiting process that that disqualifies people. I think most of them should be allowed to get through.
Yeah, I I just, I think if we open up the commercial zoning to say you can have Airbnbs in there, I think given the interest in Airbnbs that we've already had, we're going to see a lot of rentals turn into Airbnbs. And I'm and I'm just saying that based on the number of applicants that we've had over the last few years in that way. And then I would put a kibosh on any residence being turned over.
Easy to say, like the 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 market is not the problem solved within that zone.
Yeah, we do Airbnbs in the commercial district, done.
Yeah, and it's a very high water, you have to clear it for a couple of blocks.
Right, because we can still have rentals in our residential areas, which we do, you know. But then I would leave zero residences off any kind of Airbnb qualifier.
And I mean, we're not I I I think if you take it by a case by case basis, I mean, they're asking for it to be resolved. And it's okay to say yes sometimes and no sometimes and I I think it's okay if something, and and I know it's a pain in the neck when people are I think it's okay if something, and and I know it's a pain in the neck when people are. Putting in work and everything, but. We don't always have to agree on everything, you know what I mean? Like, I I think.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, even if I don't agree with it, let's just get some rules.
Right.
Down so we can stop passing you guys stuff that you're gonna sign.
That, I mean, really, that that's really my issue on, on this whole thing. Like, when I'm looking in voting, I'm saying, are we losing a resident? Meaning are they leaving town? Right? And now we're filling it sort of with this temporary lodging. So I'm not gonna have volunteer for my committee. Or we're not gonna have people who are here on the regular. So that's the number one thing. And then number two, what's the condition of the building? Is this sort of part of. Some plan for rehabilitating the building? So that I'm comfortable making that decision and talking that through.
Okay.
Um, but if we do a rezoning with commercial as transient lodging. I don't want to see any Airbnbs in our residential areas.
Right. I would agree with that.
Yeah. Residential areas, meaning even the upstairs of. Dallas Street.
Anything zoned residential, I should say. Yeah, so if we're gonna open up commercial to Airbnb, anything that is yellow, orange. I don't think there should be any Airbnbs there.
Right.
But this is, we're talking, we're talking about the property where you might be driving through town expecting to find a hotel, but you can't because we're so small.
Right.
This is where you stay.
That's right.
And I, I think. You know, I totally get what you're saying, and and part of me agrees wholeheartedly. But then another part of me says, we're not gonna solve the housing crisis with like sixteen apartments. We need to be focusing on getting this planned unit development out so that we can get some of these other areas in town. That are good for higher density. Like the tire factory and and Blenham and and those properties. I think that's where we're gonna solve a lot of the housing.
That's a good point. If we think about this in context of our, our wider sort of development plans, I think that's, yeah, it's a good thing to keep in mind.
Yeah, and. You know, for me, this isn't about feeling like we're sending something that gets shot down because. I, you know, I think for the planning commission, if we think this is a good plan or we think this fits in with the comprehensive plan, then we're gonna move forward with it. Uh, whereas, I don't, I don't know, the ideas that you outlined, I don't know where they fit in. I have to think about that some more, but. But I I'm also still stuck on it. I don't. I think there's investors out there that would like to buy these properties. I mean, I'm a landlord and I. Granted, I have a duplex and one of my units is short term lodging. My partner handles that. I completely have it. I told him, I don't want it. I don't do that at all. I I like having long term tenants. I mean, like, I screen my tenants while I have good tenants in place. They take care of my property. So to me, I don't have to. You know, they're nice people. I don't have to talk to them. I choose to talk to them. Um, I don't want to do Airbnb short term lodging. I think there are other people out there like me who believe that to some extent, providing a, a safe. Habitable, habitable place is a service and. You want those people being your landlords. You want those people because those are the people that are focused on community development. Those are the people that care about their tenants. If you create a town that. Entices investors to come in, you're gonna. You know, you're gonna create a market that's not affordable and, I mean, I'm. That's devil's advocate. I'm also someone who, like Mr. Gritsko, supports letting people run their businesses how they want to.
But, um, I am also letting people run their businesses the way they want to. But I don't think we have to rezone everything to allow that to happen. If somebody's home is, you know. Zoned as a residential, you know, what they're asking is for us to rezone it for them. And I don't think we need to blanket that. You know, I I don't think, and, you know, we can set up rules, but just because something falls within the rules. Doesn't necessarily mean. That I'm gonna vote yes, you know what I mean? Like, so that. Having, you know. Definite, um. Criteria that has to be that, you know, we shouldn't. Have that.
Right.
But I don't, I don't think that's necessarily gonna give us a blanket yes on everything or a blanket no on everything, even having it in there.
Right, I mean, just like, Miss Miss Greer talked about, you know. That could have gone either way because she was taking. You know, a, a, a building that had apartment units in it.
Yeah. That was in such disrepair and everything else. I can imagine a landlord just going in and, you know, fixing that up and everything else.
Right.
Another way to. Add friction on it is to increase the permit fees. At, at two hundred dollars, somebody can attempt an application and not feel too bad if it's, if it's lost. And a few thousand dollars, you have to feel a lot better about your business case if you wanna change that. And you can keep the case by case review, increase the fees, and you probably reduce some of the applications. And probably that's all stuff, because we, we spend twelve hundred on sticker ads and challenges that we do, we lose a thousand dollars.
But we also, but we'd also have zero fees if we rezone.
Yes.
You know.
The decision would be right.
I think that another part of. What I'm also concerned about here is just the town looking like. You know, we're approving things, some things and we're not approving other things. I don't want it to look like any sort of favoritism. I want it to look like it, it's a very deliberative. This is why, this is the reason that we're, we're saying yes, this is the reason that we're saying no, and I just want it to be consistent. And I also don't want to waste applicants' time. So having people come through the planning permission process. And and having, you know, the, um, you know, the public hearings and and going through all of that process here. And then getting it to town council where they also have to go through the same process. It's just very. It, it's very uncertain, especially if you are a property owner, like, am I gonna be able to do this? Am I not gonna be able to do this? Like, I, I don't know what the rules are and it doesn't seem to be consistent. So. I mean, you know, for me, that would cause, if I were trying to get something approved, a lot of anxiety.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm just trying to reduce that also for on the part of the applicant. And I don't want our town to look like it's, you know. It's, it's just doing things willy nilly.
Yeah, I know. And I, I, I'm totally empathetic with that position because I think we do leave ourselves up to. Like criticism if we aren't treating everyone fairly or considering all things.
Right.
And so, uh, like I say, I, I, I'm in favor of like, of making this commercial zoning like this, but. Given the number of properties that could be lost to Airbnb and we've seen it happen in Charlottesville. You know, see it happen in residential neighborhoods up there. I would not want an Airbnb beyond our commercial zone if that was the text you're adopting.
I, I like, I'm not familiar with the buildings that have, that currently have apartments in there.
All of them.
All of them, every single one in the commercial district.
Matt?
I, I did a, I did a walk in and took a set of photos to kind of inventory, but the, the drive through kind of. Was in, was in play. This is a commercial attached to the funeral home. So that's one that used to be a house, has this, this one now. This one looks like a house and is a house. The upstairs space is. Here's the vacant space. The multi-family single room.
But on those, are, what, what are they, rental or owners?
Uh, tenants.
Yes, okay.
Well, and the, um, you know, for the former, their country store, it is all commercial right now?
All commercial, uh, its previous use was multiple residents. Full, full.
All rentals.
Full, full, um, yeah, these are the planted upstairs apartments, full. Sort of vacant available.
That, you know, that's for sale.
For a property there is Airbnb back there, right?
This.
The back?
No.
Um, at one, at one point briefly it was, but it's all, um, it's all residential apartments now.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like one of the.
And solid down block here, it's all amplified upper level apartments.
But, um, above the driven then, former room.
That's right, that's right. Um, yeah, that's one, that's one we approved as Airbnb.
And three thirty, who knows what's gonna happen with that?
Uh, yeah, it has four apartments in it. This is four, and then here, this is three apartment renovations that are in progress that we approved. This is a solid apartment building. I don't have a count, it's a, it's a fair amount.
There's four in the white building and. Eleven in the brick building.
That's a big one. There's two more commercial buildings down here. With the vacant warehouse. And then. I guess in, in this East Main end is what we've been discussing with the. Old houses that have some misuse, so the, the one application before it's now, the one that we dealt with. This one just went on the market. A couple that are in poor condition and the commercial building. So that's the, that's the mix, but it is a lot of buildings that have had mixed tissue. And they've changed uses over the years. Like that back and forth to kind of continue. How quickly and smoothly do you want that?
So.
I was gonna say, maybe the answer isn't to rezone them then or to amend the zoning. Maybe it's a separate issue to look at some of the vacant buildings and figure out how we can incentivize those. And in addition to that, come up with some criteria for what we're gonna approve and what we're not gonna approve regarding short term. I'm not for anything, I just want to be consistent. Uh, and I do wanna have some sort of, I mean, maybe it doesn't need to happen. Tonight, or, you know, even if we, we have some other things on our plate, but I would like to figure out how. As a town, we can target some of these buildings and get them. At least do whatever we can to incentivize that, you know, it's not, it's not just.
Yeah, and if it isn't, you know, again, this goes back to my criteria, which is are we losing existing residents and what's the condition of the property? And so if we are concerned about the condition of some properties. Part of our discussion, like on the town ends, even maybe, hello, we know you need to do tens of thousands of dollars to make your building habitable. But the town is also supportive of you monetizing this building in creative ways.
Right.
You know, including whatever happens. That, that might incentivize a property owner to do the maintenance they need to.
Do you consider this as?
To save a building.
Can we ask a question? Like, what? Does maybe Airbnb have any tools at its disposal to get owners to be more confident? Maybe does the town have any tools?
Legal, I mean, like, we basically have fines, you know, and we can take a property owner to court to compel them to do the work. And we are exploring those options this spring.
I mean, it sounds like if we care about our, our resident safety, that might be the first way that you want us to act with.
Yep.
That's the stick.
That's the stick.
What about the other stick of like? Taxing people with their property is what you can.
Can't say, you can't segregate.
Or I meant the fine.
Yeah. No, it's, it's not. It's a, it's not illegal to have a bad investment.
I guess, but, but I'm also not just concerned about buildings that are in poor condition. I mean, I really am concerned about the number of Airbnbs we have in town at which properties are in use for them. And so. If we're talking about consistency, I'm really just looking at, are we losing a long term residence and what's the condition of the property? That's sort of what it boils down for me as.
Well, you know, we, you asked Mr. Wallace to come up with some numbers for us in previous meetings about how many. Tourist lodging units we've had in the past versus how many we have now. So we're actually well under that number right now. Because in the past, we had High Meadows, we had Chesterfield, we had Lumpkins, in addition to whatever Airbnb units there were at the time.
Yeah.
So we don't have Chesterfield anymore. We don't have High Meadows and Lumpkins will be up and operational, but that's just a couple of units. So we're actually under.
Well.
But I would like to incentivize then a hotel to open, because when those hotels were open, we also had people living in those buildings.
Right, it was more efficient to have them clustered into two big old houses.
Right, so we have a higher population, you know, I mean, so we, we need to have long term residents and we need to have. A hotel that has people living in it.
What I would like to see is. How. Often these Airbnbs are vacant. Are we getting everybody coming in and wanting their, you know. Airbnb to be opened when the ones that we have right now are vacant twenty eight days, seven months? You know, if, if, if every Airbnb is full. Every weekend and people have to book it months in advance because everybody wants to be here and they can't come because every Airbnb is full. Then, you know, tha- that might adjust how I, I vote on Airbnbs. If we have, you know, eight Airbnbs and every one of them is only full one weekend out of the month. Then that seems silly to constantly just be. Opening up more.
That's a statistic that we could collect. Two to four times a year. Um, they report their, um, they file a transient tax on a quarterly basis. And we can take the total revenue divided by the advertised price and get how many nights they were full. And if we aggregate that over all of them, we're not giving away anybody's business data, so I can give you a percent full. Um, a couple times a year for information and we can sort of track this issue.
Now, does, I mean, that could vary greatly because a night could be, you know, fifty dollars one night and two hundred another night.
Yeah, I won't, that's true. I wouldn't see. I wouldn't be able to capture that.
Cause you, you're not getting the number of nights occupied, right?
No, they don't disclose that. They don't have to.
Why not just ask the landlord? For trial?
But it, but again.
Doing all this math. You got a business, how you do it?
Well, that's the thing. I mean, I think they wouldn't do it if they weren't making enough money to make it worth their while. Some people would rather not have a long term tenant and. Maybe lose a few dollars or maybe they're making a few dollars more. But that's, you know, people do this for their own individual reasons, but they're not gonna do it if they're not making money. Probably.
But you go back to the use, you, you, you want to know the options, it was just ask the landlord, what is your option to do rent? And it's simple.
All right, so what can we do to make this easier for the town staff who are already overtaxed and. Having the. We're getting the minutes out of us.
And. Just to know where they stay.
Are you asking me what would make it easier as far as setting up rules and everything like that?
Yeah, yeah.
I hate to say this because we're doing it already tonight. But I think a work session. Where we just kind of sit down and. Back and forth and take notes and kind of.
Can we combine that with a brainstorming session for how to get, like, identify the properties that are vacant in the commercial district? And then. Try to come up with some creative ways to incentivize those owners to do something. Like that cute little purple building that's from babies? Why is that? It's been empty since I moved here.
That, it has a resident.
Does it?
And yes, and she's got her windows boarded because it's a residence and people assume it is a business.
Yeah.
And stop and go like this into her living room all the time and she put those up, but it is a, that is a house and somebody does live there.
She can't assign private business. I mean, they do that in Williamsburg. Like they put, you know, in private residence.
Yeah, no, it seemed like a weird way to handle that issue.
Right, right. But they do, we can, if you look in the, if you walk around historic Williamsburg, they have the houses that are marked, like, don't peek in our windows or.
We live here.
Right.
And, um, yeah, incentivizing property owners is one thing. The Airbnb is kind of a different conversation.
Sure, but maybe we could combine.
Part of it.
You know.
Yeah.
Just in one evening instead of having several different work sessions.
Yeah.
Discuss.
And I think it's gonna come down to, do we want, A, we have to decide, do we want to update the ordinance? So there's just one clear rule to follow.
Right.
Or not. Or not?
Right.
And then I think from there, we can decide what the criteria then are for evaluating any given property that comes up in town for it. I will say, one other sort of vote in favor of sort of a blanket policy just for the commercial districts. Given that we are going to have more residential, more residences added to town in the near term. Thinking forward, again, like, this would be a nice way to just say the commercial district is where Airbnb's live, they don't live anywhere else. And then as we have these other residences pop up. Satisfied this concern about sort of, do we have enough places for people to live? And because Airbnb's are a significant amount of work, and some people are just not up for it, you know, like. All the properties on Valley, why haven't you come there?
Right.
You can say, we've, we've made it easy, and then it'll either happen or not. And as long as there are other places for people to live, you don't have to worry about.
Right.
Right. And then when we need to look at the Airbnb's that are in village residential and grandfather them in or do something.
Right.
They're on that.
Yeah. I do favor a consistent policy.
Yeah.
I do favor that. It sounds like they're gonna actually take it to that on this particular item.
Well, I was gonna say something. No, I mean, it, it's not something easy to, to resolve. We've, we've had many conversations about it between ourselves, and I'm sure you have as well. There's just no easy answer, and. It'll just be more disgusting.
Yeah, would it be possible to make that sort of work session a part of a regular council work session? Cause I wanna make sure that every counselor is here.
Sure.
Because if we're deciding town policy, I'd wanna make sure we did it at a time that's sort of part of the regular council schedule.
But that helps with the back and forth, and then if, if council feels like a zoning update is the answer. You send those instructions back to planning commission and keep working on it, but, I mean, this is. Two hours of work. It is all, so I would, I would want to find out if we can do any zoning office for sure. Or if it's more of an administrative guidance, like what you were describing, just a couple of goals, and that's, that's just guidance I can take and work with.
Right, okay.
But sure, same on session.
Is that a thing we wanna like, make a point of?
July work sessions?
I like July work sessions for this sort of thing.
When are your work sessions?
But.
A second.
I mean, does that work for a July work session? I don't know what else is on the docket for July. Cause this, I'm assuming this conversation will like, like, take the entire work session.
July, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, let's work on it. Let's work this nice discussion next week at our work session, and then schedule a joint thing in July.
Okay.
What's that, July?
The second. My second Monday, C eleven.
Well, thank you, I, I know it'll be helpful to, I remember it. And it's, it's a great amount of work for, for both bodies, but I, I do think it would be.
Okay, a little bit of a tangent, Hidden Rain, does anyone listen to that, the podcast?
No, no.
Ah, so good, yeah, okay. They have an episode today on doing less. So I, it's very relevant to this conversation, because we're trying to do less, we're trying to make things easier. Sometimes in order to reduce friction, instead of, or improve things, instead of adding a policy or adding some legislation. Take something out, remove some restrictions, just make something easier and less friction. It's really good, it's really relevant for today.
It's a hot topic in zoning, most, most of zoning is what you can and can't do on property. And sometimes problems go away when you make the zoning work in shorter.
All right.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Your podcast.
Good read.
Yeah, I have a new one. All right, thank you. Back and forth with, so this, that covers this, okay. Tourist lodging special use permit for free forty-five weeks, Main Street. If you'd like to step up. This application has appeared to force now for the planning commission, and we voted to bring it over to your body for. A decision. We voted in favor of granting a special use permit, and. This is Austin, Twitchel and Jocelyn.
All right, so we'll try to give you a quick spiel. We accepted a job recently at Avon Hill, so we're going to be living at Avon Hill, which is in Orangeville, about fifteen minutes away. Which is going to leave our house vacant. With that being said, there are weekends and holidays that we will be kicked off the property and have to have a place to live. So that's our main thing of not being able to do long-term rentals, because there are weekends where the owners are gonna stay up at the property. And holidays that they have their families up there, we will not have a place to live. We also have free dogs, so like renting a place for the weekends, not ideal, really not an option, not, no place is really allowed for dogs. I have worked in property management for about ten years, Austin was in the Air Force for seven years, and then worked as an analyst. We, let's see. The other reasons, I know that there's a big discussion with having long-term rentals versus Airbnb's or short-term here in Scottsville. Which makes sense, we don't have a ton of long terms, we especially don't have a ton of affordable. Our house is not an affordable long-term rental either way. To make ends meet, we would need at least twenty-one hundred dollars a month for mortgage insurance to be covered. And that does not help the, the affordable option, besides the fact that we literally don't have any place to come home to if it's long-term renters. I actually was hired by the previous owner, Stuart, to rent out his property when he owned it. And then he listed it for sale and for rent. And it sat for about two months, two and a half months as a rental listed at nineteen hundred. And I think I maybe had pre-showings during that time period. I did not manage it with a tenant in, because it did not get rented. And then Austin was the buyer, I actually did not know him at that time, we met much later. But yeah, so I have dealt with the long-term rental aspect of this property, which it needed less money at that time. It still sat on the market, and this was in late March to early June, so that's a prime rental market, it should have rented. And for our home, it is a historic home, and we really, really like the idea of short-term rentals, because. We get to be in the property every three, four, five days to come and check on everything, to come and clean the property, make sure all the maintenance is being kept. It was built in seventeen hundreds, has a lot of quirks with the home, a lot of upkeep. And we like it to be that way, we want people to enjoy the historic part of Scottsville, cause I don't know, we are the oldest building, so. No one else really gets to offer that to anyone. There's a bunch of little apartments in Airbnb's, but an actual house that has four bedrooms. Will just bring a lot more people to the town to spend money, when we literally cannot be here. We'll be fifteen minutes away, and of course, we'll be shopping here and there, but we do have a job to do, so we have to be up there mostly twenty-four hours a day. So we won't have the option to spend money in the local town anymore, just all the things that were back.
Planning commission did recommend this one with the one condition that the parking for the use be restricted to the back off-street area. There's enough parking space there for four vehicles, which is planned for the proposed use. So they're preserving the one-street parking and conditioning that the guests have in the back. Since we have the joint meeting here, it's an opportunity to move this forward a little bit more quickly. The town council were interested in calling a public hearing for your June twentieth meeting. That would give this its decision a little bit more time.
Yeah.
So, is it okay with the council? Yes. Oh, shoot. You just do it on the twentieth.
Thank you guys.
New business, final site plan for Tiger Fuze Market, one fifty-three users per garage.
Had some, some zoom problems today with the Mount Unusual link posted, so I had to help some folks with that thing. But I hope to see Chelsea Schley in a short bit. They are moving forward with their site plan package, they did the preliminaries several months ago. And we got some comments on that one, which they had addressed. So this is the first reading of their final site plan. This is for planning commission, over information for town council. These site plans do not go to town council unless there's a dispute or appeal that needs council arbitration. If planning commission and staff can work on this to everyone's satisfaction, it can go from this point to building permits. So this is planning commission working in more of a technical and government capacity. We have a site plan ordinance that guides, you know, what needs to be in a blueprint, and what are the construction standards for commercial development. But we haven't seen this kind of construction in town in, in many years. So, so planning commission needed a little bit of help in interpreting. The ordinance isn't so did I. So we took on a little bit of consultant help with Berkeley group over in Bridgewater. They have services from plan review and zoning drafts all the way to executive search and interim city managers. You know, city hall and lots that they can rent out. So we've got the hourly services of Ms. Maxie Brown, who's the retired planning director from the town called that for many years. She looked through this, read our ordinance and interpreted the site plan. She provided one set of comments to me and the applicant with her findings, that's the. So she, she read our ordinance and interpreted the site plan, she and I talked about this together and agreed that these thirteen points were shortcomings. And the initial submission, so we shared those, and the applicant has responded to all of them with a revised plan set. Some of them are very small, they, on the first submission forgot to include an arrow pointing north. I know which way is north, but it makes the description more clear. So they put that on there. The proper set of signature panels, they were using a template from Admiral County. And neglected to fix the signatures for how it works in Scottsville, so they fixed that. Those are pretty trivial, some of them were more substantial. Most importantly was checking numbers of parking spaces and making sure that the right number of handicap spaces were there. So they checked those calculations and were correct, but they, they did the double check on. The most thorough back and forth is about sidewalk and walkways. This was an area where planning commission had some male hesitation. Our ordinance requires adequate pedestrian connections to the adjacent parcels, and the. Preliminary site plan didn't show sidewalks, and the applicant said, we think this is mostly a car-oriented site, we don't think it needs sidewalks. Planning commission said, okay, thank you for that opinion, but we disagree. Our ordinance calls for pedestrian connections to the adjacent parcels and we want to see that. So the site plan drawing here shows their next attempt at that. And it has, it has sidewalk pathway connecting to the structural steel parcel, not going along the west corner of the site. And then another path that goes down to the, the old Dawson House on the backside to the south. They're not adding crosswalks across James River Road or the twenty, those would be separately dot-related issues, so we would have to plan together in the future. But on their own, without looking at the dot, they can build and have in place connections to the two adjacent parcels that are walkable. I think that tees up connections in the future really well. I don't know what the future of the structural steel site is, but it, it might not be a well-inchance forever. The same folks who on Tiger Fuze will do the parcel down below with the Dawson House, that's about six acres big. They haven't indicated what their plans on that are in the future, but subbing a sidewalk into it suggests that. Whatever goes there, they can connect through a five foot, so I think that's good.
Um, one second, so the sidewalk is a mulched pedestrian path? Is that with? We're looking at a C three?
That's what it says.
But that, it doesn't have to be. Like solid handicap accessible B dot regulation?
No, it doesn't. There's lots of different surfaces that it could be, I think what they, what they've proposed is the softest and easiest to change. Not knowing what's going to happen there. Their, their, their plan is that not knowing what's going to happen on those other sites in the future, they might improve it. So what they're proposing is inviting to somebody on foot, but not something that would be a waste if they had the knowledge, they could improve it, because something else is still there. But you certainly have room to call this last time. Hello, Chelsea.
Where it says response, that their response should, response, right?
Yes.
Response to Maxie. Because it says details for typical pavement, asphalt, sidewalk and walkway sections have been added to the site detail.
Miss Schley, can you help us decipher the, the trail drawings that have been revised to mission here, please?
Hey, Matt, I'm sorry, I was having a little bit of a speaker problem, so, question?
We are looking at the trail details that are, that are added here, because this is new to the site plan. And we appreciate your response on it, so could you, could you help us understand what we're looking at on the pedestrian facilities that are added?
Uh, sure, so we had added, let's see. We, we had taken, I believe, Admiral County's Class B section for. That, what we have in, on page C eleven as detail nine, as the typical walkway section. And so the detail that we have shown, I believe, is taken directly from Admiral County's design standard manual for, I think it's what they call the Class E type two. And so that's the section that we have shown on C eleven, and then the detail that you're showing on landscape plan and other site plan sheets is the plan view of that. Of just where the general connections will be. Yeah, keep going to detail nine?
It's not the last pages. Yeah, no, I see, I see the difference, sidewalk.
So you give an example of sidewalk and an example of wall, how those are good?
Okay.
Correct, yeah, and then in the plan view. The different walkways are just called out with different. Finishes like on, or different patterns, patches, I should say, on, in the plan view.
How do we know which one on C, like, out of C six, eleven, seven, eleven, eight, nine, eleven? In the site plan, it shows up as mulched pedestrian pathway, so.
Are those inconsistent?
That would be number nine.
On the James River frontage, the gentleman's interior proposal.
That is what they like.
Yeah, that's what they're looking for the sidewalk. I'm sorry?
I, I was asking, Miss Schley, is, is there any consistency in the drawing? Are you proposing sidewalk on the James River frontage and then mulch trail on the interior, or is it the same?
Uh, it's the same.
So that, I'm trying to find some of the ordinance, do we have a copy of that, does somebody have a copy?
Yeah. I got you.
Yeah, I guess I thought when you're talking sidewalks, it would be not a path.
Well, and, and if the concern is that we don't know what's going to happen in the future with future developments, we also know, I mean, I, I appreciate that. And that flexibility, I just don't know. I just don't know if that site's ever going to turn over next door. And I certainly don't want you to put something down and then have to rip it up again. But I definitely want something that is safe for people to walk on, baby strollers, wheelchairs.
I mean, is there any ADA requirements?
Yeah, well, just, I, I read sidewalks, I was thinking hard surface.
And this would, number eight would make that four, four inches thick concrete and a layer of mulch to your mind.
Is it walking path?
Yeah.
Which is great, but not a sidewalk.
I think if we did incorporate a different surface, at least on James River Road, if there were a hard surface, I think we'd prefer for that to be asphalt. If that would be acceptable, um, just because of the shoulder and ditch section there and the fact that this improvement won't be in the right of way itself along the frontage of the property. The, it, it would be more ideal if a different surface was preferred along the frontage to do an asphalt path instead of sidewalk and then internal to the site for the time being. The leading from James River Road to the, the property to the south, if that could remain mulch, um, just because of the, to allow for flexibility and future relocation, so that we don't have to tear up something that's more permanent. But I think along James River Road, um, you know, if, if a hard surface is, is what is desired there, I think we'd much prefer to do like a five foot wide asphalt path as opposed to a, a concrete sidewalk right there.
Do you, um, similar to on, on C11 where you have the sidewalk section and the walkway section? Do you, you have a typical asphalt multi-use trail standard that you use?
Don't have one shown on, on the plan at the moment, uh, because we don't have one spec in, in the site plan. But it, we would also just take that directly from the design standards manual in Admiral County. I think that's their, it's their type one, class A is what they call it, I believe. And that's their five foot wide asphalt path.
With, um, you know, thick enough asphalt that it's sturdy for bicycles, but not cars, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's like a certain, um, you know, sub base and then thickness of asphalt to specification in the design standards manual.
From a safety standpoint, uh, since this will be used for pedestrian traffic, ice conditions, weather, all effect roadway pavement using asphalt. How would that sidewalk, I mean, would be more beneficial to make it a concrete as opposed to asphalt? Would it be some type of roughness to it to provide footing maybe in, in rainy conditions? There's no use putting, you know, AP that slick stuff over there. You know, if you have a wall.
Miss Schlein, is your question?
I, was it, was it about the distance between the edge of pavement and the proposed walkway?
Is there, is there a difference on safety and maintenance between the concrete and the asphalt? Or are you just looking at cost?
Oh, um, well, I mean, cost, but in constructability, um, just with the shoulder and ditch section, since, you know, typically we most often see sidewalks and we construct sidewalks with an urban street section that has curb and gutter. That always works pretty nicely where the back of curve kind of rolls right into the sidewalk and, you know, all your concrete work is, is, is kind of pretty much done sequentially. But in a shoulder and ditch section and along this roadway, it's, you know, we just think from a constructability standpoint, it would be easier to, to utilize asphalt on this particular site.
Let me rephrase my question then. Is this the safest material to use for pedestrian traffic under any conditions?
Yeah, I don't think that there's, um, I mean, honestly, for something like a, um, a multi-use path, you see this, you know, on, on John Warner Parkway, that's an asphalt trail. There's plenty of asphalt trails around and that are constructed. I don't think that there's any type of evidence that, you know, concrete versus asphalt, that one is, is safer than, than the other. I think it has a lot to do with aesthetic and just a lot to do with kind of what makes sense for an individual site in a particular area. And just that this, that James River Road is, is a rural section and, and asphalt path works, will work pretty nicely with that, given that there's not a curb and gutter and that James River Road is not an urban street section.
I agree with that. When you've got grass on both sides, you more often see that asphalt where it, it doesn't look as urban. We grass on both sides here with a gap between the trail and the street.
So why is the sidewalk just on one section of the property? Is there a reason why there's no sidewalk drawn between the entrance and 20?
Yeah, so I guess just kind of giving, um, you know, our reading of 2411 in this initial submittal and needing to provide pedestrian walkways between adjacent properties and between buildings on the site, we're achieving that with where we have it located. I think moreover, it's at the moment a somewhat of a safety concern to continue a pedestrian walkway up to Route 20, up to the intersection of Route 20. Just because of the lack of pedestrian connections across Valley Street extending down James River Road. It becomes kind of a very tight situation there where there's, it, it's effectively like a, a sidewalk to, to nowhere at the moment. And I don't think it's a sidewalk that's, um, a sidewalk to nowhere where there's a potential for a future connection. I think it's a, it kind of seems like a sidewalk to nowhere where there's an unsafe condition for pedestrians to be crossing the road at that point. And so that's, that's the reason why we're not showing it there. Just until there's some type of, um, you know, either, you know, restructuring of that intersection or traffic calming or something where drivers on Route 20 are expecting to see pedestrians at that intersection. We just didn't want to leave people there. I think that in the future, having people, you know, the site to the south redevelops and kind of having people come up through the center of the site, provides a much nicer pedestrian experience. And just also given the grade of the property boundary to the east adjacent to Route 20, where the, um, or kind of, sorry, I'm sorry, it's kind of the northeast, where the grade drops off pretty steeply on our property as the property continues south along Route 20. It's just not like an ideal situation for a pedestrian connection, given the topography and the existing road conditions. It'd probably be much nicer for, you know, whatever type of redevelopment happens in this block as a whole or whatever type of pedestrian connections kind of, you know, come about further down Valley Street, closer to the intersection with Route 6, that they could walk up through the center of the site to access the shopping center.
I tend to agree with that. If this, if this were getting connections and improvements made in the future, like crossing somewhere down here and then crossing again somewhere over here, as I'm trying to walk to the post office in a practical way. I, I don't think I'm going all the way up Valley Street and then treating this as a four crosswalk kind of situation.
Right, but I see people crossing the intersection to, to access James River Road. I mean, I walk this that way and I see this guy jogging with a baby stroller down that every morning. He's coming across James River and straight down. He's not coming from downtown. So I don't, I don't think it's a sidewalk to nowhere. I think it's, it would be a great, yeah. I think people would use it if it were there.
Than everyone else.
Right.
And also down Valley Street. Now, I know that that's a separate plot, but, um, sorry, separate. This is a plot, same owner, so. Um, where would we stand with that? Obviously, I, I guess the position is that. Do you, I mean, Miss Schlein, do you have a statement on that about a sidewalk on Valley Street?
Um, as to just like how, I guess, are, are you talking about how that comprehensively would take place in the future? Like along the entirety of, of Valley Street? Or just along like a sidewalk on, on Valley Street? At, at all with this site?
On this property, on your client's property, not the whole length of Valley Street? I know there's some grading issues there, that's messy.
When we were exploring sidewalks from the funeral hall up to Dollar General, that was 1.2 million. And from Dollar General up to the intersection of 6 and James River was 800,000. So I think.
For what it's worth too, when we last looked at a plan to get a sidewalk all the way up to the shopping center, it went up Valley, but then cut up Route 6. So it didn't go, um.
You don't want to have.
It didn't go all the way up to 20, so.
And way, the way the southbound traffic comes flying off, it makes a right hand turn on the James River. You don't want a pedestrian crosswalk there by any means, because they don't slow down.
So just in terms, yeah, so I just mentioned that in terms of sort of like how we've previously thought about sidewalks and where people go. That's where we were willing previously to make an investment or explore, you know, sidewalk connectivity going up the shopping center.
Yeah, I, I mean, the reason that we don't have it shown on, on our plan on Valley Street is because we, we feel we're meeting the requirement of the ordinance. But also the, you know, the grade change moving further northeast along our site does become, it, it's a steep bank right there off of Route 20. And I, I think also after all of the kind of robust conversations that we had with ARB and identifying trees along Route 20, um, we, we just kind of be really rehashing out a, a lot of grading and deciding where that sidewalk would go. Uh, and I think it would be difficult in the future to extend that connection along Valley Street just, just because of, of the grade change and, and how much higher it is above of the vehicular traffic in that location.
It's, it's true, they, they don't have to provide anything off of this one parcel, but this is the parcel that we're site planning and talking about. So they, they, they're not required to provide anything on other property that they own. We have to ignore that they own the adjacent parcel. We're connecting to the adjacent parcels and then judging, um, safe, convenient, appropriate and. VDOT standards, but Miss Schlein, you're, you're proposing instead of VDOT stack sidewalk, you're offering something from Admiral County Design Standards. It's less than that because it's a more rural site.
Correct, yeah. Hey, um, the, the VDOT specification for an asphalt path is, is really a multi-use path. And that, that also, um, it, it's about 10 feet wide with four foot graded shoulders on each side. And so with, yes, we're, we're proposing Admiral County standard just because we feel that's much more appropriate, given the, for this site. And the fact that it's not kind of part of a larger kind of comprehensive nature trail system where a multi-use path might be a little more appropriate.
So my opinion on what you mentioned, Matt, is they've already made that other parcel serving to this one. They've already set the drainage, right, not drainage, but.
The storm.
Stormwater, I think. Um, so I mean, I think it's reasonable that if we felt like a sidewalk would be necessary on Valley Street, even, I don't know, raised sidewalk that doesn't take the trees away, but is on this side of the trees. I don't know enough about the topography and how much. But don't they have a direct connection with it already?
I, I might be looking at it wrong. Isn't this path connecting to the property that you're talking about?
Yeah, and that's like, that, that's a path to nowhere because that is not, I mean, no one's going to be back there. But I was referring to the front and going down Valley. That was my concern where those sidewalks are. They're not, they are not planned for.
But where would that go to? I'm sorry.
Nowhere, nowhere. I mean, unfortunately, because there's no other and, and it, it doesn't sound like anyone's on board with it. And it doesn't sound like it's very necessary because there's not many people walking up that way. I think if people are going to walk, they're going to walk up 6 because it's safer and. I just, planning commission, just want to make sure we're playing.
When you were saying with their other property, I, I wasn't sure. I, I was thinking that this path here went to their other property.
This here is a second parcel that they purchased after all this.
Right, right, right.
And this year goes behind. So this is all.
Oh, yeah, no.
And down here on the second parcel is where the retention pond is. So they are using that second parcel, so right.
It does, I, I misunderstood you. I thought you wanted a sidewalk here going to that parcel.
Oh, no.
I at least envisioned a, an asphalt or some sort of like hard surface path running the entire frontage. You know, of James River.
And I think there's sufficient people crossing.
Yeah.
20 to go down James River Road. I don't see as many people walking up Valley Street because that's pretty dangerous. Yeah. I mean, I, I would like to have community where we have sidewalks and pedestrian pathways. Whether they're mulch, I mean, mulch is not a bad idea. I just don't know if it's appropriate on this site. But yeah, I would like to see a community on our sidewalks and get to build them a little bit at a time. Right? So yeah, I, I would like to see a sidewalk on the front, on the other side of the driveway between, uh, entrance and exit to 20. I would like to see that.
And then the, the intersection improvements would be a VDOT project later. But having the existing stub shows, you know, certainly our interest. We've got one of the four corners set and try to work with VDOT and do the rest of it.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I don't know if I, I don't have an opinion on whether it should be an Admiral County rule versus a VDOT, but I'd like Mrs. Brown to weigh in on that. Can she take a look at that?
Yeah, her, her note was for the highest level of sidewalk all around. So her, her comment was that sidewalk or sidewalk or walkway should be required along all street traffic lanes. So that those connections are there as part of redevelopment. So that those connections are there as part of redevelopment and new development. That you, her her general advice was you build the sidewalks along all of the frontage and then as those parcels redevelop, you get it all connected through. Just because this is the first one, doesn't mean you should have comments on that.
Well, and the rest, I mean, we've talked about the rest of that strip there and the status of it and the zoning of it, and it's kind of mixed right now. But if you stop asking for it, then you're going to have a town that's not accessible or that remains inaccessible to pedestrians.
I I think what what I'm not sure about is the the end state that we want. And I I guess I wish I had a better future trails map to kind of judge this against, but if we if we don't think that, you know, the sidewalks on Valley are ever practical and the best trail actually does come through to the south where the slopes are less, then this is a step in the right direction and good enough. I'm not sure what kind of where we're trying to get to.
I did like the idea that Commissioner Gritsko had mentioned in previous meetings about having some sort of more creative pathway from downtown to uptown. You know, it very well could connect with that.
What has it covered? I'm just looking at one other property we have to work with. Since the since the stormwater associated here with the sanitary amusement show, we've had really good luck in town with trails on top of super reasons. Since that land is committed in, would going onto the other parcel and continuing your trail down along the season be helpful? That would give you some some good further distance on on land that's connected to this project. And and go around the pond.
Well, let's. I think it'd be nice. I think it'd be scenic. I just don't know if it accomplishes the goal of connecting residents on Valley Street. And it doesn't really do much to connect to any residents, because those that kind of can come up six will still need to do that and cut over at some point.
But this should be more for the people walking from Blenheim and the other side of James River Road and stuff. That would be crossing Valley. And walking, walking down.
Yeah, I think they would cover. But it keeps the question mark of what's happening on the other parcel and how does it connect through in a good way? I just don't know anything about that.
Yeah, I don't know.
This is kind of what we were talking about a couple of weeks ago when we were proposing sidewalks and as an alternative perhaps that.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. If I'm I'm thinking about like the Rybana Trail System, and I'm trying to remember if. Because I think that's a good, you know, even though we're rural, even though there's lots of people in this downtown area that aren't like living out on tons of acres of farms. And it would be great to have more walking, walking areas in town. So I'm trying to remember if Rybana is all the asphalt. I'm fine with the asphalt path. I can't remember if it's a mix of asphalt and or gravel and.
They have some primitive sections, but I think the the goal has been to improve it to the standard of 10-foot asphalt. Where two shoulders can easily pass or a light can pass a shoulder or a group of people can run together. That's what you have at the Riverview Park. That's the best of both.
Yeah, I would be, I I would be fine with something like that versus concrete. I think that's more affordable and I think it. If we're looking long-term at connecting pathways, I would want something more durable. So I like the idea of having this this path, you know, on the left side of the property, but I would also like to see a trail, like an asphalt path along the front, the James, James River Road.
I've seen greenways built like this for miles and miles, and you bring, you clear snow off of them. They they hold up on bike traffic for really well.
One, one that runs parallel to John Warren Parkway.
That's a good standard to build to.
That's what I would like to see. I don't know what everybody else is thinking.
One of the things that is helpful, first, first of all, thank you, everybody, for your thoughts. This is Counselor Gritsko again. Commenting that one of the projects in working on the Van Cleef Nature Area, as we talked about the Scottsville Emerald Necklace, which is a trail system interconnecting a number of different things. I think they're all important to try to make a more walkability. Make walkability more important for the town, more important for people who visit. I think the bottom line with this particular property is to let the landowner there know that we want to have as much as they're willing to give us, and I do think the way that they do connect will help us to create that system more in the future. Some of it needs to be based on current needs. Some of it needs to be based on what we project in the near term, and some of it, it might be a little bit wishful thinking for the future, but they all are important things to think about. Thank you.
Mr. Gritsko, when we last did trail construction in Van Cleef, it was a mix of 5-foot asphalt on the street part and previous paper concrete on another part of it.
That's correct. That's correct. Yes, and some of it was based off of the understanding of the landscape architect who thought one would go well in one area based off of the, some of the topography and the soil composite in that area, and then others would work better in another part of the area.
Previous favors helped a lot in that trail and did do something that's more solid to walk on, but without any of the cost of paving.
And it's better for the environment, not having that solid, impermeable surface. I mean, this is why I don't agree that the VDOT standard's always the best. I want something that's more appropriate for our town.
Hey, Matt and and Commission and Councillors, if I could just chime in with one more item. And so for the asphalt path across James River Road, as as the site is currently designed for the the path to extend from the driveway to Route 20, we would have to do a comprehensive redesign of the plan to accommodate that. There is not enough room for us to accommodate an asphalt path on our property. And the VDOT standard for an asphalt path is a 10-foot wide path with two-foot graded shoulders. So for a 14-foot width and, you know, we can't, we can't accommodate that regardless with the with the site constraints. So I think, you know, I I I hear you, and of course, I'll, you know, be bringing this up with Tiger Fuel and, you know, their representatives. But as the site is currently laid out, we we really got to go back to the drawing board, and that sets us back quite a bit. We just don't have the property area for that at the moment.
Doesn't fit within the landscape.
The 10-foot VDOT or the 5-foot asphalt?
So the 5-foot asphalt, we cannot put it in the VDOT right-of-way if it doesn't meet VDOT standards. The 5-foot asphalt path is in, is an Admiral County standard that's in their design standards manual, but we cannot put it in a VDOT right-of-way if it doesn't meet their standard. And so VDOT standard is you know, nine feet wider than that, which the area is just, it it isn't available on that portion of the site. So I I think this is just, it's going to be you know, a major back to the drawing board item for that piece there, and it's it's largely due to the fact that if something is in the VDOT right-of-way, it must be to VDOT standards. And given that we don't have a curb and gutter section there on James River Road, we can't really design a sidewalk right along the edge of pavement to VDOT standards. So that's it's, it's not possible with the plan that you're current looking at, that you're currently looking at, I guess, is what I'm saying, and that we we, you know, really have to go back to the drawing board with that.
Is this some pasture area here that we are?
Yeah, so that's the area that's proposed to be dedicated, since the the ordinance calls for a 25-foot dedication. And I don't know, perhaps if there's a way to modify that, then maybe we could accommodate something, but once we encroach the VDOT right-of-way, we have to provide an improvement that meets their standards.
It sounds like the only narrow path that we could squeeze in and avoid the right-of-way would be right in this strip kind of around the edge of your parking pan. If we wanted to provide a footpath so somebody wasn't walking on the grass and wasn't walking in your parking lot, this is where it would have to be, and stay clear of VDOTs right-of-way and clear of the trees.
Yeah, can you, and can you bring up our landscape plan? I think that'd be helpful to have up too, just so it shows all the proposed shrubs, I guess, as we're talking through that, because yeah, there's just a, there's a lot of considerations to fit up, to fit a path in there. Given the landscaping that's required, there's, you know, we can't, there's you know, certain landscaping that VDOT doesn't want in the right-of-way, and and so just trying to, trying to make that all fit. It's going to be dicey.
You didn't put bushes in VDOT's right-of-way for a reason. And you just don't have any other space. Okay.
So I mean, that's, that's really the the main constraint here. If the lot was 10 feet deeper, you know, if we didn't have a rear setback, something like that, that could be accommodated, but right now, just fitting everything in, it's it's, it's too tight.
It's okay. I mean, I'm looking at this plan. I mean, the natural trail path is coming out Route 6 off 20. I mean, that's from from my perspective, looking at this plan, that's where it goes.
Cross, cross somewhere else and and stay on the sub- and side. I've I've run that, and it does get you around the elevation. You're not climbing as much. It's more gradual.
Those are your lazy runs?
Yes.
I don't know. I feel like we need to be connecting people on either side of James River, James River Road. I don't know. I mean, it's in our ordinance. No, I'm sorry that we didn't notice it until a week ago. I don't want, the answer is, I just don't know if I feel comfortable giving up that part of, you know, our our future, our plans. I mean, does anyone have an idea of how important that is? And do you, do you agree with me?
Walking down James River, walking down James River Road, say from the cemetery in this direction is just as, just as dangerous as walking up Valley Street, you know, bamboo forest. And not that many people do it.
The only time I led running when I had to get out of the way of a car was in this little curve where there wasn't quite enough sightline, and somebody came up on me fast and I jumped in the truck.
Well, I mean, this just speaks to why we need sidewalks. So, I mean, we don't have an obligation on the residents to install sidewalks, and we've already decided it's way out of the town's budget to do the sidewalks everywhere along the most frequently used paths or desirable paths, but I mean, we got to start somewhere, so I don't know what the answer is.
I kind of feel like that be encouraging people to walk where we should be discouraging.
So you think if we build sidewalks, then people will say, there's a sidewalk there, and we start walking?
I mean, I already walked that road. I mean, I'm not trying to make this about me, but I know that there's other people that do it. I see, I see people doing it all the time.
I've done it.
Well, the question is, why do they walk?
Well, and I think it's just for those stores, you know, they're going to be going to the Tiger Fuel Market. They're going to be going to Food Line. They're going to go to the bank. All those places. I mean, I, there just aren't that many places to walk around here that are.
One of the things I was just going to say, which is very heartening to me, is this whole entire conversation. In fact, it makes me really smile. I know it's not an easy answer to figure out what to do, but the future is trails, the future is walkways, the future is walkability and green spaces, so this is not an easy conversation, but it's a good one. And I'm not saying it's an easy answer. It took me years to come up with that one that my fellow planning commissioner mentioned of earlier, and I will just say to you all, I commend this conversation. It's not something we're going to solve tonight, but it is something we do need to solve as a town, and it really is the future. It's not just recreational walking, but walking is healthy, walking is good for families, walking is good for friendship, fellowship, all all types of things. And again, everybody pretty much agrees with all that, but in the, again, since we have such a beautiful built space that we are in, the environment around it, we want to make sure that it's connected. And I think, again, it's going to be a combination of sidewalks, trails, and this conversation is going to go on, but we're going to come up with some good answers on this, so let's keep at it.
My view of the sidewalk is we, we as a town plan for sidewalks where it's the, where there is the most pedestrian traffic. And the most pedestrian traffic is sort of downtown, you know. Up here, the vast majority of the traffic is automobile. That's how people get in and out of this place, even in terms of density. The density drops off, you know, as soon as you get up there, right?
And you're talking about putting sidewalk where you're going to have a lot.
Vehicles.
Turn into a gas station and a convenience store. And there's going to be more passes to walk there, sidewalk or no sidewalk.
So I commend the plan for sort of starting to get some pieces moving. I think that makes sense. And I think making a connection going down James River Road towards Food Line makes sense. I think building something and anticipating, you know, moving down 20 on their property, like that makes sense. But we've looked at Route 20 as not a viable option for sidewalks previously. And so I don't feel like we should be investing much time in thinking.
Well, so, so I think on the table right now is the section between the entrance and exit and what's north up to 20. So that whole section in front.
Yeah, and like, and also, but I could, to Eddie's point, and it's kind of like I was saying, I think and maybe even to Meredith, you know, it's encouraging traffic or pedestrian movement in a place that really isn't safe without sort of a more comprehensive plan for James River Road even.
Well, then can we get a commitment to build the sidewalks in a few years when we're ready for it? I would consider that.
I mean, if there was enough pedestrian traffic on James River Road to warrant it, I think you'd get it.
But I think that, I mean, this goes back to the conversation, there is some traffic, but there would be more if it were safer. I mean, I used to run and I, like, I would say goodbye to my family before I left the house, you know. Half jokingly, it's dangerous out there, but, you know, I I want to get out. I want to exercise, you know, and it's a lot healthier than. Now I drive everywhere and, I mean, we need to be encouraging people to get outside. It's true. I mean, Mr. Gritsko's comment, there's so much evidence that being outside and walking is very important to our health, mental health and physical health. And people in rural areas are, you know, unhealthier because they're not walking. I think, you know, and I I'm not, I'm not endorsing if you build, they will come, but I think that we we do need to plan. And and if it happens in pieces, then. and if it happens in pieces, then that might end up being what we have to do. And there's a big section of the population over that way that might be interested in walking. Or are already being so, just, just the end of it.
And.
If we get more people up that way, there'll be even more people.
And if, but also, I've sort of talked already this evening about future plans, there's gonna be more development out that way. I mean, if we get a HUD, which is gonna come our way for the additional properties to build out there, that will create more density out there, it'll create more walkability out there. So.
Still wanna connect it to the rest of the town.
No, I'm saying you don't want to. I'm just saying, like, it's farther down the road. I guess that's what I'm saying. So for right now, what we're trying to approve is a site plan for Tiger Fuel to get moving on their site.
Well, and conveniently, we have some of the ARB with us today, what contributions with ARB and landscaping make to this conversation? Do you have any suggestions if we were to make a sidewalk there?
Boy, um, well, it would rip up all the plantings along James River Road that we planned. I don't, some of those historic trees might be impacted.
So the big ones are the old, the old trees?
Yeah, yeah, there'd be circles. There's space at the back end of here. Does that get you beginning or something?
It's just awkward because the, the crosswalk would be north of that, so it's, it's a little trickier, but it is.
You basically have to ask.
Safer. Can we connect it down the right-hand side and move it back behind the property to the trail system? Instead of running it along James River Road? So instead of having it run up here, could it run back behind and connect over here to this? Well, how are we connecting to the other side of 20? Well, then it would, it would loop back up here to this.
That's the problem though, she, but that's still all the trees there.
Yeah, I mean, what, I think we, I think what you have to ask Tiger Fuel to do in order for us to keep our entrance corridor, that, that's a value. We decided that that's something we want to preserve as a town, right? That entrance corridor there, in terms of the landscaping, the trees. And so I think if we want to do both of these things, we have to ask Tiger Fuel to move their site plan. We have to ask them to move that footprint.
Well, that's.
Both, both back the 32 feet that they've moved it towards 20. And potentially farther away from James River Road, at least, you know, the 10 feet or whatever to get a path.
Well, Ms. Mike, could you accomplish the sidewalk on James River Road if the trees weren't there?
Um, so, I mean, I think it's, it's really tight, and it would be difficult for us to do that. Um, I think that, I, I mean, honestly, at this, at this intersection for that, I guess we'll take a few steps back. So, so there, if, if we were to put in and to kind of recap, a sidewalk to VDOT standards, we would have to put in, we would be putting in a curb along the entirety of James River Road. That is, that is cost prohibitive for this project. We, we cannot tear up an entire lane of James River Road, put in a curb along our entire frontage and repaint that. Like, we, we, we cannot do that. And so we've proposed an alternative of the asphalt path in this area. And so I think for that one segment between the entrance and Route 20, I think VDOT might even, e- even if that could be accommodated, might have trouble accepting it, um, just for that one segment. Uh, and honestly, Matt has had a, a lot of success securing grants for the town, and I think that a comprehensive replanning of this intersection for pedestrian access and, you know, perhaps if there's some VDOT funds, grants available for a comprehensive replanning, that, you know, they'd be much more inclined to look at this site in this intersection, especially if this, you know, convenience store and car wash is off the ground, because I know that they look at economic development as a, you know, a heavily weighted factor and, and a lot of their funds. I think for, for us, it's not, there's just not enough room there for us to accommodate something to, to VDOT standards without having to do a comprehensive, um, you know, re-installation of the road to make it an urban street section, um, on that one section. And so I guess the way that I look at it, I think the town could have a, you know, a greater likelihood of, of realizing pedestrian connections in that area if this site plan is, is off the ground and, um, can contribute to economic development factors and some type of VDOT application. I know that that doesn't, you know, do anything, I guess, immediately with, with our site plan and getting things off the ground, but just how things are laid out at the moment, the depth of the property, um, and the existing conditions of James River Road, we can't accommodate something right there.
One of the things I was just gonna say that I think is helpful in what you just shared is in some senses, often we shoot for the ideal, and the ideal isn't really possible, and other times we don't shoot for anything. I think your plan is a reasonable plan. I do, I do support your plan. I, on, again, ideally, we would like to cross a number of different places, and the opportunity that we have to gain both your business in that area and to allow for that connection point to come in seem very reasonable compromises from my perspective. As I said, I think in an ideal world, there's a whole lot of other things we might wanna have happen from this project, which are just not things that I don't, I'm not sure we as a town can ask you to do. It might be nice if we dream, we wish we could, we could do that, but I, again, I think what you're presenting makes a lot of sense. I do think there's a lot of great points that both planning commissioners are making, our mayor has made, and, uh, my fellow town counselors, but at the same time, the perfect isn't always possible. Sometimes we have to take what's right in front of us, and I think you're presenting us with some really good ideas.
Well, thank you. And, and for just, um, it, I, I think, you know, Counselor Gritsko brought up some great points that I think we just kind of, aside from specific to this project, you all had a really good conversation about pedestrian connections and, um, you know, whenever you can kind of take on the, the work and to kind of map out a master pedestrian plan connectivity for connections, desired connections throughout Scottsville. That's, you know, super helpful to have some type of map or guide or something that says, you know, this is where, you know, we imagine connections, and this is what we imagine them to look like for any, any applicant coming forward with, with Landy's proposals, um, in the future. I know it's a little off-topic, but it's always helpful to have those guiding documents.
Okay, so then how about that, what I was just drawing as a backup? What, sorry. If it's not feasible, I mean, it's. How about drawing, how about doing that instead? And either the concrete that's permeable or even I might be interested in the mulch path, I mean, I like the idea, as long as it's not.
Rough, roughing that in, dedicating it, if there's, if there's any hint of what the second phase of this is gonna be, so the step shot out and provided so people can start using it.
Well, and assistance from Tiger Fuel of building that or segments of it.
Yeah.
Because that won't interfere much with the site plan as it is.
It crosses that line of off-site improvements.
Matt, I think the sewer connection, um, you know, in the easement, that's within our stormwater easement, it's some type of mulch path there. I think that's, that, that's fair. Um, I, you know, beyond, beyond that, that is an, an off-site improvement that is not subject to this development proposal. Um, but I think something within the stormwater easement, you got, you brought up a great point about, um, you know, all the trail connections you's, you've been able to secure within the ACSA easements elsewhere in the town. Um, and the, that, you know, stormwater facility is, is serving this development and, you know, some type of the mulch path, you know, connects that gets, gets people a lot closer to Route 6.
Can you speak to your client to see if they would commit to any of that? How, or how much of that do we commit to?
Oh, yeah, of course.
In lieu of the second half of the sidewalk on, on James River Road?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm sorry. So Matt, were there any other points to this ground that we should go over?
No, ma'am, no, nothing else was in dispute. Um, how, how's, how's speaking on the rest of them? The, um, the additional request is about 350 feet of, um, mulch trail running along the sewer easement as shown, um, which covers a covers a decent distance there. Um, I think that's, um.
I was gonna say that.
See how far this would be. Probably not stop there. Is it, I think it, it's meant, is it meant to go all the way to Irish Road? I can't, I can't see clearly where the stormwater easement stops.
I'm trying to open my file right now to see where we have that easement extending to. You know, it gets pretty close, but sorry, just give my, uh, computer a second to cooperate here. Yeah, so this, the sewer easement does connect all the way to to Route 6.
That's pretty good progress. I could see the internal connection from the shopping center all the way to this point on Irish Road.
And I do think also, seemingly it stays green and not too developed.
Yeah, well, you can, we, we know that the, the stormwater con this is gonna stay. And yeah, I don't know about the rest of this parcel, but you can, you can be assured about this edge, kind of, and that are curved down the bottom, and it kind of parts off that corner of it, and then they something over here, but that path roughed in there seems like a, a good progress. At this point, this is the best word I can put into it.
Okay.
Take that back and keep it on the side.
I'm sorry.
Take, take that back as progress for them to think about and keep, keep taking it on the side.
Yes, yes. Commissioners, any other questions, concerns, feedback on the site plan? Councilors. Okay, thank you. You don't have to vote in it, right?
No.
Okay.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mike. All right, I, does anyone have anything else? Make a motion for your.
And I thank you for inviting us to your meeting tonight.
We, from Counselor Gritsko, uh, Commissioner Gritsko, or?
Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned 9:44.
Thank you, everyone.